Good afternoon, everyone. We will call the meeting to order. Today is July 11th, 2022. This is a legislative session of the Salisbury City Council. First up, just a couple of announcements. In case of emergency, we would ask everyone to calmly exit out here, take a right, go down the stairs. If that way is blocked, take a left, go around, pass the bathrooms, County Executive's Office, go down that stairs. Please do not use the elevators. And then now, we will say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no end, just for now.
With us tonight is Pastor Greg Morris from the Parkway Church of God, and he will provide us with the invocation. Pastor Morris?
Thank you so much, City Councilman. Let us pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we are so thankful for the opportunity to invoke your presence upon these proceedings. We are definitely a people who are constantly in need of you. We recognize that we are blessed to live in a constitutional republic where we express our freedoms. We just pray, God, that you would just favor us in all things, albeit though we at times find ourselves in our humanity reflecting those things that are negative, away from you, distant from your word, the biblical moorings. In that, we know that you're a gracious and merciful God. Forgive us, cleanse us, make us new, and enable us to continue to show the wonderful love that you have represented in your son, Jesus Christ. We ask these things that you might be glorified. We pray blessings upon this city, upon our county, and our state, and our nation, for you are our benefactor, and we are grateful. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Morris. Next, we have a proclamation. Unfortunately, it is not Mayor Jacob R. Day. It is Deputy City Administrator Andy Kitzerro. Mr. Kitzerro?
Not a bad substitute. So I have the honor and privilege of doing a proclamation today, so I'm going to jump right into it. Whereas July is Disability Pride Month, it coincides with the passing of the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990, and offers an opportunity to celebrate and strengthen the pride, power, and unity of people with disabilities, their families, and allies. And whereas disability pride has been defined as accepting and honoring each person's uniqueness, seeing it as a natural and beautiful part of human diversity. And whereas this annual observance is used to promote visibility and mainstream awareness of the positive pride felt by people with disabilities, pride that comes from the celebration of their heritage, disability culture, and the unique experiences they, as a people with differing abilities, lend and contribute to society. And whereas President George H.W. Bush signed the Americans with Disabilities Act into law on July 26, 1990, to ensure the civil rights of people with disabilities by establishing a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities. And since signed into law, it has expanded opportunities for Americans with disabilities by reducing barriers, changing perceptions, and increasing full participation in community life. And whereas people with disabilities are the largest and most diverse minority within the population, representing all abilities, ages, races, ethnicities, religions, and social economic backgrounds. And whereas the City of Salisbury works with its own Disability Advisory Committee, which was established on October 1, 1991, to ensure that those with disabilities have an equitable opportunity to participate and benefit from and relish the opportunities their community provides, as the committee assists the mayor through advocacy, education, and referral in order to develop a broader appreciation and understanding of the attributes of people with disabilities. And whereas the City of Salisbury celebrates and recognizes the 30th anniversary of the passing of the Americans with Disabilities Act and the progress that it has made since 1990 by reaffirming the principles of equality and inclusion and recommitting city efforts to reach full ADA compliance. Now therefore, Andy Kitzerro, on behalf of Jacob R. Day, Mayor of the City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim July 2022 as the Disability Pride Month.
Thank you, Mr. Kitzerro.
And we have this wonderful proclamation. I'm not sure if anybody is here to receive it. If I should take a picture with myself? Selfie.
Just selfie, and you're on TV too, so.
Yeah.
All right. So yeah, I will make sure we get this memo presented to our disability committee.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate it. We have a slight change to the agenda before we move forward. President Pro Tem Sheree Sample Hughes is here. She is the delegate for District 37A, and she is my delegate, so I will let her have the floor.
Thank you. I'm actually going to do this.
Are you, have you moved up?
No, actually. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to say certainly thank you for the acknowledgement in my official capacity as Speaker Pro Tem for the House of Delegates, and it's a pleasure to be with you on this evening, but I will hold my comments. I'm here in a different capacity for public comments.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
Next, I will entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Look at that one, Mrs. Blake. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Ms. English, how are you doing this evening?
Good. I'm happy. Good. So for the consent agenda this evening, we have several minutes. Work session minutes from June 6, 2022, and we have special meeting minutes from June 6, 2022, and June 10, 2022, as well as June 17, 2022. We also have council meeting minutes from June 27, 2022, work session minutes from July 5, 2022, and last but not least, a resolution, number 3179, approving the appointment of Margaret Lawson to the Historic District Commission for the term ending June 2025.
Questions or comments?
No. Is she here?
She is.
Yes, she is. Ms. Lawson, if you would stand, we want to thank you for volunteering and serving on the Historic District Commission. Thank you very much. We appreciate the time and effort.
Thank you.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That is four to nothing. Next, entertain any public comments. Ms. Hughes?
And good evening again. As I said, I'm here in a capacity of a citizen tonight, and more importantly, as a parent. Just real briefly, just a highlight for you, why I am before you tonight, that on September 3, 2017, my son's life changed, and our whole family's life changed. While my son physically endured the pain of being run over by a Salisbury City fire truck, we emotionally have endured the pain for all these years. And I've always raised my children in public service, and that has been their life journey as well. And to date, my oldest son, Jordan, whom I'm speaking of, he's a 911 dispatch officer for Somerset County, so he's still in the public service arena because he loves it, and this is what he knows. He became a volunteer firefighter at the age of 14 here in Salisbury, and I, to this day, am still proud of him. But what I am concerned about is the fire service claimed that they're a family, and when they say that they're a family, I think that they need to always take that to heart and understand what that really means. Because at the end of the day, when you are a young person, just starting out, and you want to continue to provide that volunteerism and give to your community, you know, you have to think about that life changes. Life shows up. When you're just starting out, you're trying to get a full-time job, and nowadays, most of us have two and three jobs just to make ends meet. And so what my point at this moment is, is that he received a letter on Saturday, and we're on this group chat, my whole family, my husband, my sons, and when I received the letter, I felt like once again, the second time, that the City of Salisbury, Salisbury Fire Department, has broken my heart. And I'll read this for you, and yes, I'm quite well aware of policies and procedures, but if you can just come from my standpoint of knowing that my son was very courageous to even want to step foot back in the fire department. Every time I would see a fire truck, whether it was Salisbury or Baltimore City, I would cry, and I wouldn't even go to department meetings or ban quips at fire departments because I would sit up and cry and look at a fire truck. So, the letter he received on Saturday, and he's probably going to be really upset that I'm here, but I'm just at the point, it is what it is. It says, "Mr. Hughes, the Salisbury Fire Department regrets to inform you that the Personnel Board has met and determined that you are hereby dismissed from the corporation for failure to meet the minimum performance requirements as defined in Article 6, Section 2 of our bylaws for two or more quarters in the year. This dismissal means that you are no longer authorized to participate in any fire ground, EMS, or corporate functions involving Salisbury Fire Department as of 7/6/22. You are directed to return any equipment, uniforms, access badges, keys, pagers, and any other paraphernalia that belongs to the City of Salisbury Fire Department. Failure to do so promptly, you will have criminal or civil action against you." Again, I'm very well aware of policy procedures and personnel issues, or whatever needs to be done, but because he is unable to meet, and other young volunteers are in the same trap, 36 hours a month to be a volunteer, it's difficult, but their love and their service to this community is not going to be unchanged, but it will become unchanged when you get letters like that and just say you're dismissed, like you're a criminal, like you've done something. He ain't doing anything besides being an upstanding young man that's 23 years old, that has a deformed arm because he was ran over by a City of Salisbury fire truck. And to dismiss him when he genuinely loves public service, and he's a 911 dispatcher officer, the fire trucks and the ambulances, they can't go out unless they hear from a 911 dispatcher officer. So he's on the front line. So all I'm saying to you tonight is, you need to look at some of the policies. Fire Department, yeah, maybe when you have people who are in that space of just trying to get their lives started, maybe you cut it down to half of that, maybe 18 hours a month, or maybe 25 hours a month, something that people can really realistically work with and know that they still can continue to show up when people call that fire truck and when people call that ambulance. He's one of them. He gets out of bed, and he'll go, and he'll go because he loves this community. And to then just send a letter that's not even signed, it says Personnel Board, who is that? Who's the chair of the board? You know, just add a little bit of more respect for people, and for people who have given almost their all. We didn't know if he was going to live or die that day, and I told him many times, I did not want him to go back to the City of Salisbury, but then I stepped aside and said, you know what, you're 18 years old, and I have to be in the mother's place because you're starting making decisions. But what helped him get to this point where he is today is because the whole time he was in rehab in Baltimore County, he had on his wall and in his bedroom today Salisbury Fire Department. That got him the courage that he needed to keep on getting through therapy. There was one time he wanted to just give up. I mean, and what do you do? Another young black man just giving up? No, he had the support of his family, and if the fire service is really family, then say, okay, you don't meet our criteria right now, thank you for your 10 years of service, but at least say, okay, well, let me maybe get you in touch with another fire department, maybe Hebron or somebody, because maybe they take less hours. But just a good old dismissal letter with no signature for somebody who's given their all, it's exhausting to me, and it's heartbreaking, and I know I'm over my three minutes, but it is just really heartbreaking, and I think that we can do better as citizens of Salisbury. And yes, I know my son's going to be upset with me being here because I was going to send you all an email, but I'm not at that point now. I'm at the point that it just hurts and it's frustrating, and he's hurt.
Sheree, could I, I mean, could I ask you one question? Did they specify why they let him go? I mean, actually?
Specifically because he's not able to meet the 36 hours required a month to be a volunteer firefighter. It's a lot. He's not the only one that got a dismissal letter. A young lady who just had a baby, okay? How many hours can she put in? But her heart and her love is still for Salisbury City Fire Department. So let's think about, let's think outside of the box sometimes, people. Let's think about what that might look like for somebody maybe who is just getting ready to retire, and they were going to say, I still want to keep my hours, I still can serve, or somebody who's just starting out. Let's maybe look at these policies a little bit better. But for me, with this, it almost should have been that my son should have been a lifetime firefighter. So.
You said 36 hours a month?
Yes. Thank you for your time, and again, we all are here in public service. We know that we have to sometimes look at things a little differently, but at the end of the day, we're human beings. And I was hurt, and my son's hurt, to see that letter, and he got the letter right before he walked into the 911 center to do his, his shift. Like, really? Is public service really worth all this? Because that's what his heart is? So he's going to gather all of his items for the City of Salisbury, and he'll deliver those. Matter of fact, we probably need to do it certified, because I do not want him to have a criminal or any civil action against him, not another young black man harmed by anything like that. So thank you for your time.
Is there a letter on file? That letter, is it on file anywhere?
Yes. Go ahead, well, I don't know.
Can we get a copy of that letter? Or could I?
It should come from the City of Salisbury.
Can we get a copy of that letter? I just, I'm kind of, and not because it's our delegate, but it's, we want to have firemen and women, but this is how we treat them. And this is, it's horrible. We want something that we're just throwing away, like it's a piece of trash, and it's, that's not right. And we have young people who are willing to do this, when we're struggling trying to find people to do this.
Well, that's what I was getting right to say.
And this is what we do to them, and it, I just, I'm, I'm just, and no, Sheree and I never talked about this, this is the first I've heard of it, so I'm going to let that be known right now, but I am really upset because I am a mother, and what happened to her son, the city should have never dismissed him, and that's how I feel.
Thank you. Thank you, Delegate Sample Hughes. Appreciate that, and we'll, we'll look into it. Any further public comments? At this time, we'll go to administration comments. Mr. Kitzerro?
Sure, and Sheree will take a peek at that, and we'll follow back up with you on Not a whole bunch here. Julie returns from Canada tomorrow, so you'll get to see her again next week. I've been holding on the fort. Mayor wishes she was here, but he had someplace else to be, but the only big comment I would have is, at the end of the month, we are bringing, are launching our inaugural Salisbury River Fest, which is going to be a big downtown event surrounded and located on our new Riverwalk Games Park, that we'll be doing a ribbon cutting earlier that morning, and then having water activities and a whole bunch of vendors and a lot of fun. So hopefully, people can make it out for that on July 30th on Saturday. Other than that, hopefully, people had a great Fourth of July last weekend, and looking forward to the rest of the summer.
Mrs. Gregory?
I think it's rather disturbing, given the delegates' public comment, Speaker Pro Tem, that here we are declaring Disability Pride Month tonight, when her son, who was disabled, has been let go. I'm going to need a little bit to process what that means, but suffice it to say, to me, I think that is shameful. I don't think it's acceptable. I think as, as April said, this is, you know, we're looking for people to come work for us and come, come do these things, and to let someone go who has, after something traumatic like that, come back into service. He could have very easily walked away from it. And to be let go because he can't meet a certain number of hours, probably because of his disability, that this is how it ends up, I'm disappointed, to say the least. I mean, I was, I was coming in here grateful that the city was declaring Disability Pride Month, because we've had an amazing Disability Advisory Committee that I am proud to help as a member of the council, and it's, it's my disabled son's birthday today. So this has got a lot of layers for me, and I am hoping we can get to the bottom of it. Other than that, I will say it is early voting. Early voting goes through until the 14th, and then election day is on, primary election day is on the 19th. So please show up. I will tell you right now, early voting is where it's at. You walk in and walk out in five minutes. Don't wait for, for actual primary day on the 19th, because you will be waiting in line most likely. It's safe, it's easy, and nothing to it, so please get over there and vote. Lot of things coming up on, on the ballot this year. New governor, new everybody, so get out there and vote.
I'm overwhelmed. I felt, I pro tem, I felt it. I felt everything she was saying. I know her son's personally very good kid, very good kid, and when he was in that accident, he struggled. He struggled with that, the deformity and everything of his, his limb, and we just sat up here last month, a month before last, and struggled with the fire department to get them where they needed to be. And here we dropped this bomb on these two young people, because from what I'm understanding, he wasn't the only one, so it's probably some more behind him, other than the young lady who had a baby. But we need some clarity, and we do need to make some changes. It's not like this young man wanted to be deformed and wanted to be in an accident or wanted to be run over by one of our fire trucks, not at all. And for that to have happened, I really truly think the City of Salisbury should have really stood their ground and did what was right by this young man, and I feel as though they failed him. That's how I feel. I just feel that way, and I'm going to feel that way. Nobody's going to change my mind until something is rectified. That's how I feel. Now, I have some good news, and that right there wasn't good news for me. My daughter, who was chosen by the National Folk Festival to be the stylist for African-American hair, so I'm looking forward to her and all the other formalities and the festivities that will be going on that day, and make sure you go stop by and see some of the hairstyles that she has created and will create that day. Matter of fact, it will be her and my other two daughters. They wouldn't let me in, but I'm the one started the whole trend. And if you look it up in her National Folk Festival, I'm the one who started it, but it doesn't matter. You know, I'm just happy for her, and she's a very modest young lady. She knew it some months ago and never said it. I had to find out through the National Folk Festival that my daughter was selected, so I'd just like to, you know, say congratulations to Leah McClendon. I love you, mommy loves you, and I just hope Salisbury comes out and pours itself out for the National Folk Festival this year. Thank you.
A couple things. I want to put on the work agenda for next week, because next week is a work agenda, and council has a right to put on work agenda. First of all, the Personnel Board for the Fire Department, we need to have some type of report and understanding of what the Personnel Board does, who governs it, and how it works, and how we send out letters. And that needs to be, I believe, expedited, and that's my request on public record. The second thing on the work, work session for next week, I like to have a report and update. Does someone not like what I had to say? Okay. I like to have an update on the mental health and the Salisbury Police Department, their numbers through mobile crisis, and an update on the target grant in their co-responding model, or their, or whatever their model is emerging to be through that grant. On eight, one will be another work session, and I have two agendas for that work session, which I like to come roundabout again and have addressed. One, I like to have the council be aware of what progress has been made with tiny homes. What are the holdups? And I know there's some things, holding things up in regards to bidding out maybe electricity and stuff, and I know we've got times, hard times getting contractors in and getting, bids have gone up and something like that. I like to have a full report about the tiny homes, and I want to revisit the discussion about the dirt bikes. I want us to circle that back. We spent an awful lot of time discussing it. We even looked at an ordinance from Baltimore County, or was it city? And I read that thoroughly, and there was some discussion of looking at an ordinance, if there wasn't ordinance in other cities, such as possibly Dover and Annapolis, if I'm not mistaken. But I want to circle back on those two things. Thank you.
Mr. Vice President?
Yes, and if you're healthy enough, please give blood.
Mr. Vice President?
Hey, how you doing?
Good. I, I'm going to ask a question to Ms. Beauchamp. Would this fall, would the Personnel Board and that discussion fall under a closed session? I believe it would.
That is a question, I'm not even sure who's on the Personnel Board. I'm not aware of what.
What I was going to say, but the, there's two different entities in there, because it's a volunteer fire company.
Right. Some of it may not, yeah, so we need to, there's a few more things we need to figure out.
Yeah, he's not essentially a city employee. He's a volunteer for the Salisbury, is it Station 16 volunteer fire company? Because there's one at Station 2.
Yeah, so there's a couple other things we definitely.
Need to find out.
We're going to find out, we're going to give everybody the information, we'll do our due diligence. There's, there's a little bit more to the story, but definitely, I think there's an agreeance that we, we just need to look into this and give everybody some more information, which is definitely, I think.
It's definitely work session worthy to find out exactly what a Personnel Board means, what the directives are. I mean, that deciding what a Personnel Board does, doesn't, we're not, we don't even have to necessarily talk about a personnel issue, it's a volunteer issue, and just to see what they do, what their role is, how they come about these decisions, and looking at, and looking at the actual volunteer time with 36 hours a month regarding people who may be on maternity leave or have full-time jobs who have disabilities, if the hours equate. I don't know what I don't know. That's why I'm asking for us to have a discussion about it.
Sure.
At a work session.
Mr. Vice President? Yes, sir. If I could, I didn't, I did not hear Ms. Beauchamp's response regarding the personnel matter, because I'm not sure if by association, that may not fall under it. I'd ask her to please check on that and make sure before we start airing things in public about a person, personal meeting.
I will look into that, and I will speak with Mr. Kitzerro about the Personnel Board and how it's composed, and whether that's a private nonprofit corporation, or whether it is a city entity.
Thank you.
And if it needs to be closed session, we will work with Julie and Kim to just add that to the agenda on Monday, so I think.
Thank you, Andy. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Anything else, Jack? Were you here for the whole meeting?
Well, I was, I was a little bit, I had trouble getting in, so.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Okay. Anything else?
You're up in the wild blue yonder, Jack.
Of course, if, of course, if the only thing, oh, is Jack, do you have anything else to add? Before I have one last comment.
Jack?
No more, no more comments.
Okay. Ms. Blake?
And of course, if you're healthy enough, please donate blood. The East Shore continues to be in critical mass with blood. If you're the one that needs a treatment. If you're the one that needs a transfusion or a specialized surgery, or if you're in a major accident, you are going to definitely depend on that blood. Thank you.
Thank you. Reiterate what everybody said about early voting and give blood. The last thing that I have is coming up at the National Folk Festival. If anybody would like to volunteer, please go to thenationalfolkfestival.com. It's a forward slash volunteer. They have a lower third. They also had one up for your give blood now, so every time you say it, we're going to post that up there. So just please, we need volunteers, we need help, and it should be a good time to Folk Festival. If there's not anything else at this time, we will adjourn our meeting.